Thank you.
Thanks. We'll continue the not read discussion some other time. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen Meeting for May 11th, 2021. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we have five selectmen present as well as the town administrator Derek Sullivan and the town council Richard Bowen.
Okay, why don't we have Judy lead us in the pledge, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Announcements. Alan?
Last weekend, we had the Chili Fest from the OBA. Great success. Nice to see people out observing all the rules and having a great time. Garden Club sale, I think is this coming Saturday at the Methodist meeting. Hey Sandy, what time's your meeting start?
Nine AM to noon.
Oh, thank you.
Four ninety-five Main Street Methodist Hall. Judy has the announcement.
I didn't know that, sorry.
That's okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, Patrick?
Okay.
Jim?
Um, you know, a few months ago, we're talking about the community aggregate. Electrical, electric, electrical aggregate. And I finally dug up the website for it. It's warehamc e a dot com. You might plug that into computer. I'll check it again in a minute. It's a pretty good website. You can sign up for it. You can do comparative rates based upon your kilowatt usage this year. Well, that's all for now. I'll talk about it later.
Thank you for that information. Judy?
I got my usual list. Wareham Council on Aging continues to offer free lunches on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please call the Council on Aging the week before you want to take advantage of this offer. Pickup for meals has been changed to the rear of Town Hall. Coffee and conversation takes place each Tuesday from nine to ten at the rear of the Multi Service Center. I'm guessing maybe that's been moved as well. May garden therapy do it yourself kits, which were created and donated by the Wareham Garden Club, will be available for pickup in the front of the Wareham Free Library on May fourteenth. You need to reserve one by calling five oh eight two nine one three one three zero. Hip hop dance exercise for seniors, not including myself or Mr. Slaven, is coming May eighteenth at one PM. Space is limited. So call five oh eight two nine one thirty one thirty to preserve a space. Outdoor exercises every Tuesday at one in the library courtyard. And there's also chair yoga every Thursday at two in front of the library. Obviously, all of these happenings are weather permitting and and social distancing and masking is required. Going to remind you about the free community shred and electronics recycling day, which is on May fifteenth from nine to twelve at the Plymouth County Federal Credit Union. And as Mr. Munez mentioned last week, we also have our own recycling center in Wareham. There will be a charge of twenty-five dollars for each TV and twenty dollars for each monitor to be recycled and cash only, please. You do not need to be a member to participate. Wareham High School DECA program is hosting a fashion show outdoors in front of the school on May thirteenth at four. Donations of five dollars to the general public and two dollars for students. There's also a tailgate auction fundraiser Wednesday, May twenty-third from one to three thirty in the high school parking lot. More information can be found through the high school website. The onset Bay Center and Wareham Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Council continue to present family play groups which explore sensory activities for three to five year olds. The group meets from ten to eleven. May twelfth will be the next time. Space is limited, so please register by going to www.onsetbaycenter.org or email garafoley@buzzards savebuzzardsbay.org. And I think we have that posted on our website as well. Go for a walk on onset beach while reading a story and the story walk events. And those are again sponsored by the onset base center and the Wareham Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Council. Story walks start at ten to one. This coming Saturday, May fifteenth, you're going to be reading Crab Moon on the beach. I guess you can park for free on the pier. Again, you have to register for those programs. Free food for children continues every Tuesday and Friday from three thirty to five thirty at Gleason Y and also at Brandy Hill Apartments from twelve to two. No ID is required. Please take advantage of the program. Staples will laminate your COVID registration card for you for free. Looks like we may be carrying those around for a while, so it's probably a good idea to get them laminated. You already heard about the garden club sponsoring its spring plant sale on May fifteenth from nine to noon at the Main Street Methodist Hall. Be there early because by nine twenty-three, everything is gone. Basically, it's the most popular event they have. Wareham Free Library is now open from nine to five Monday through Saturday. Masks must be worn and social distancing is required. And please bring your own earphones if you're going to be plugging into something that you are listening to. For those who do not want to enter the library, you may still have curbside pickup. When you call, you will be given a five minute window for pickup. Please park in front of the main door and open either your trunk or your rear drawer or your passenger side window so that you will continue with contact free pickup. And on May fifteenth from ten AM onward, please join in a cleanup of the Ethel Hammond School Playground. Bring your own rakes and masks and help out with this great community effort. It's a lot of leaves out there, guys. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. One addition, I thought it would be out there. I believe on May fifteenth, Neil Sullivan and a group of people from onset are going to be doing a cleanup along the bluffs where people had cut some trees down and other things. So it's open to anybody to help them out. Thank you.
Yep. Well, we had an election last week. Welcome back, Alan. I thought it was a good election. I thought people, for the most part, behaved themselves. The town clerk did a good job with it. Once again, it's surprising how few people turn out to vote in these things. And that's all I have. Let's see, citizens comments. I know Sandy wanted to speak.
Did you want to speak, Sandy?
Yes.
She's coming.
I'm coming. Thank you. Sandy Slaven, I just wanted to thank the Wareham Garden Club for the donation of the geraniums that have been planted around the memorial or memorial at Center Park. They will be looking nice on Memorial Day. Thank you, Garden Club.
That's it.
Okay. I'd also like to add one more thing. I know municipal maintenance always makes an effort around Mother's Day and Memorial Day to clean the cemeteries up, and they were spectacular. They worked in the rain, the pouring rain for a couple of days, and the cemeteries were all beautiful for Mother's Day. And I just want to say thank you to municipal maintenance and the employees there above and beyond what what we would even hope.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I'll start with Indiana Troop. Now that Sandy has had her announcement.
Good evening. Hello. I made a brief and keep it short, but I did just want to address, I believe that we're talking about what's going to happen with the Hammond School later on tonight in regards to the old Boys and Girls Club situation. So first, I wanted to thank you all for really, really making this a priority. You know, obviously, it's something that isn't, I mean, it has things that are important to the town involved, but you know, it doesn't have to be something that you guys have been as heavily involved in as you have. And you know, that really means a lot, seeing that you guys really care about what happens with this whole situation. But with that being said, I know Shayla Tavares is going to be talking about a proposal she has for the building and her team has for the building. And I'd really ask that the Board of Selectmen hear her out on that one because I used to go to the Boys and Girls Club. I was there for a few years and Shayla was one of my counselors there. And so she's been there ever since I was there. I've since, I don't go there anymore. But I know when I was there, she really cares about the kids and cares about everything that happens there. And it's awesome seeing her take this huge step up, huge step up for the for the next six weeks. She's going to have this program where they're basically working with the Bridge Church and onset, and they're helping these kids out a ton. So I really ask you guys to hear her out on that proposal. And I think that's pretty much it. But thank you guys very much.
Okay, well, thank you for your remarks, and we'll bear them in mind when we get to that agenda item. Next up, Catherine Garafoli.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for letting me take a few minutes. So again, I'm Kat Garafoli. I'm the director of the onset base center. Ms. Whiteside, thank you very much for talking about our upcoming programs. I did just want to take a minute to clarify a couple of things. We ended up changing the story this week on May fifteenth to Fish on the Moon, which is about a straight bass migration. It's a very sweet little book that is geared towards younger kids. And the great thing about story walks is that pre-registration actually is not required. It's self-guided. And along the way, we're going to have some activities. So again, we're going to be set up from ten to one. And you can show up during any time throughout the three hours that we have it set up. And it's nice and socially distant, right out on the beach. And we're really excited about partnering with the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Council on this project. I did just want to let everyone know that most recently, the onset base center has started opening up registration for adult and family learn to sail programs this summer that will run from June twenty-eighth to August twentieth. So you can find that information on onsetbasscenter.org website. You can register there and we're going to start our weekly rotation of free programs, which is going to include stand up paddle boarding, kayaking, and learn to shellfish programs. So pretty excited about a full blown summer here in onset and looking very much forward to getting some families, kids, and adults out on the bay. So thanks very much for taking time. I'm also going to stick around for the Boys and Girls Club conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, let's see, Annie Hayes. You got to, you've got to unmute yourself. Did you do it?
I did.
I did it. I'm sorry, I'm still working this out. You hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Thank you. Annie Hayes, and I was sorry that I missed my opportunity. I keep thinking I have to raise my hand after someone's finished speaking, so I didn't say anything when you refused the right of first refusal. I was really sorry about that. I understand your different reasonings, but it seems to be a contradiction often as we work on developing the downtown, which is in a flood zone. And we're clear cutting and, you know, just destroying a lot of acreage in this town for our part in carbon mitigation. I also wanted to comment to Ms. White, Whiteside, that I had heard that Target had solar panels because you had mentioned that big box stores didn't have the structural capacity to hold them. So I went to Google Earth and sure enough, the Target box is covered on its roof with solar panels, as are a number of small of the businesses in the industrial park. And Walmart is fast on Target's tail. They intend to cover everything with with panels as well. So those are my my comments. I also am finishing written comments for the Mass EPA site review of the two Tohona Makepeace properties and the Charge Pond. And I, I wanted to get some information, if I might. Mr. Titlebaum, you had sent an article when, I mean, a letter, sorry, in response to a request for information about an earth removal permit in two thousand fourteen for one sixty or another property. And you said that there had been no earth removal permit.
That is the board's response to the Public Records Act request.
Yes, no, I appreciate that. And it's good to have the information out. At the oral comments, Zoom meeting with the MIPA agent, Mr. Striski, there was a lot of conversation about the large amount of sand being removed currently from make peace properties. And the assumption was from many of the participants that there is no earth removal permit for those properties either, that there may have never been earth removal permits for the AD Makepeace Company. Could you clarify that?
There's nothing to clarify. I was asked for any documents we had relating to, the board was actually relating to any earth removal permits that might have been issued to the AD Makepeace Company, and there are no records.
So it's an empty file?
It's not a file. It doesn't exist.
Oh, okay. That was the word I think you used in your in response. Maybe I have that wrong.
We reviewed, we reviewed our earth removal files.
Yeah. Okay.
There may have been other people who have such permits.
But I understand you would be the permitting agent for earth removal. Is that correct?
Under the bylaw, that's correct.
Yes. And under the bylaw, if there is no earth removal permit and earth is being removed, there's a fine per diem. Is there not?
No.
It starts at fifty and then it goes the second day is a hundred. It keeps getting larger.
Not for an agricultural use.
But this is clearly more than.
Yeah, we're well past the two minutes. I think we're
Okay.
Uh, territory actually sued the town on these grounds. And so I don't want to get into a discussion with it during citizens comments, but but thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
I'm glad you got the opportunity to speak this week. Uh, let's see. Richard Swenson, please. Okay. Good evening.
Hi, thank you very much for letting me speak. On the Board of Selectmen agenda tonight is a topic of process of determining future use of DCA school, which I'd like to comment on. As you know, most of the town property that Wareham has is under the management of the Board of Selectmen. Recently, the WRA brought two projects to the board for the Tremont Nail Factory, which were approved by the board to move ahead. This is very good news, but I want to people to understand that back in October, the developer said they could start in January, but due to what I consider a confusing, convoluted, unclear process that we currently use of review and approval, we still don't have a signed lease, but we are getting very close. Last year, the WRA initiated initiated an effort with Serp Ed to determine the best use of the DCA school property once it's closed and ownership is transferred to the board. That work is done and has been presented to this board. However, there are other opinions that don't align with that recommendation. And in my opinion, we are currently stuck. I believe that the DCA school is stuck because the board and the WRA don't have a tight process for managing the disposition of the town owned property that is controlled by the board. So in hindsight, the WRA probably would have been better off if they had initiated their work with the Board of Selectmen and ended with Serp Ed instead of the other way around where we started with Serp Ed and ended with Board of Selectmen. So regarding this process to determine the future use of DCA school, I encourage the board to give real serious consideration to the topic. And most importantly, to really focus on developing and documenting a process that can work for all town property under the jurisdiction of the Board of Select, not just DCA school. The empty West Wareham and Everett schools immediately come to mind as great opportunities for this town if we only understood how to execute. I hope the board can come up with a process that will result in three key deliverables. Use cases that the board can support, a clearly identified owner of execution, and the expected financial strategy or financial model that the board wants used. So good luck tonight. I hope that you can come up with a process that will allow DCA school project to move forward and be applicable to other town properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, Missy Deesik? Has her hand up?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Missy Deesik. I'm the director of the Council on Aging, and I too wanted to just speak on the DCA school. And I just want to say that the Council on Aging would be very supportive of the DCA school becoming a community center. I know that was one of the, I think was strategy number four under the master plan is to support efforts to create a new Wareham Community Center. And we think that would be a great place for a senior center, whether the Boys and Girls Club, Recreation Department, it could have such great use for the town. And we just want to say that we would hope the selectmen would be looking in moving forward with that and having the senior center move in there and having our six, seven, or eight thousand seniors in town have a nice place to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your remarks. Dee Jepson?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes. As you know, I probably contributed to citizens comments being limited to two minutes, and I will stay by that. I think I didn't come prepared tonight to speak about anything, but I think what Annie Hayes has asked is a very legitimate question, and her request should be honored. And I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, board comments. Alan?
Well, something really simple. If anybody has any of my signs somewhere, just drop them off at thirty-six Oak Street. I think I got almost all the two hundred plus signs I stuck out. And also Bob White and I have been doing a TV program for about a couple of months now, which basically I talk about what's happening with the Board of Selectmen now and in the future. We'll continue to do that, even though the election is over. That particular program, we never talked about the actual election, just things in town. So if people want to know what's happening, think there's lack of communication, that particular program offers somewhere between a half hour and forty minutes of straight information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Jim?
I want to really address here, I can address it with individuals later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Judy?
No, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any either. Appointments, reappointments, or interviews? Don't have licenses and permits? We do have?
Yes, the change of manager for Rancho, all of the paperwork is in order. I double checked that this morning. So I will move that we grant the application for a change of manager from Rancho Inc., DBA Liquor Locker, thirty twenty-one Cranberry Highway, East Wareham.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Uh, let's see. That takes care of that. COVID nineteen update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me pull that up. You know, I think everybody knows we're in the yellow, and the good news is we're down to eighteen confirmed cases with six probable this week. If you've seen it, the South Coast Hospital Group has been doing vaccinations over at the Multi Service Center. It seems to be going well. And I know they're, we got to get up on the website because they're scheduled, I think they were out at the woods at Wareham. They'll be out on Set Pier. So what they're trying to do is travel to maybe some of the areas of where people lack mobility to get the vaccination. So I really appreciate their efforts. And, you know, doing that in our community to help our residents.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Alan?
Yeah, I was over by Walgreens today, and I noticed that Walgreens is also doing COVID shots now too, finally.
You know, Patrick, anything?
Yeah, no, there's plenty of vaccine out there. Apparently more vaccine than there are people willing to take it. The thing that bothers me the most is that, excuse me, there's lots of individuals who are buying into a lot of the baloney of, you know, anti-vaxers, so to speak. And they could be a detriment to the entire system if they don't get on board. And the reason why I say that is because in order to get herd immunity, you got to get over seventy-five percent, eighty percent in order for it to take effect. If there's a chunk of people that won't allow it to happen, then it won't happen and we'll be all back in the same boat at some point down the road when the vaccine starts to wear off. We'll all be back in the same boat with things shut down and going through the same process to try to keep people alive again. And I, I implore you to do the due diligence that's required to understand the vaccine and how it was designed and constructed and how there is really no chance of anything going wrong. You know, vaccines, they have an interesting thing about vaccines. They usually, a vaccine, if there's going to be a problem, happens in the first sixty days. That's the reason why they're required to hold the vaccine for ninety days before they can even file any paperwork with FDA or anybody else after the last person gets their vaccine. And the reason for that is obvious. And, you know, look, this is is an important thing for everybody to understand. We can't do this alone. We have to do this together. And that means everybody stepping up to the plate, rolling up your sleeve and getting it done. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
I believe that today was the first day that there were no deaths in Massachusetts reported, according, laid off to COVID. So that's just exciting news as far as I'm.
Okay. Yeah, continue to be safe, though. You know, once again, if you're amongst a bunch of vaccinated people, you can probably let loose a bit. If you're not, if you're out in public, continue wearing the mask, continue, you know, washing your hands, just cut the spread of it. Still out there. Trash disposal update. This may be the last time this goes on an agenda.
He's smiling.
Town administrator, yeah, Derek's got the permous smile on. Let's see what his face really looks like. Derek, where are you?
Oh, I'm here.
Speak to us, please.
About what?
Trash. How's it going?
Good.
That, that's a little more abrupt answer than we usually get from you.
Yeah.
Care to elaborate?
No, I know, you know.
No? Okay, well, that's that's the other answer.
Yes, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to ask. I mean, it's.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's see if he can be Calvin Coles the rest of the night. Alan?
Just for Derek to give a lot of information to the public, a couple of people have asked where their refunds are coming from. I know that I believe that Patty had basically put the list together and it would go to Judy in accounting. And I think people were kind of thought to get stuff like a week or two. Probably speaking out of line, but most municipal governments take anywhere from thirty to sixty days to pay any bill. So my understanding is that the payments for refunds will probably start coming out in a week or two. Derek can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, we already sent, you guys already signed the warrant. We did it last week for the thirteen thousand dollar, the first.
Yeah.
If they're asking where it's coming from, it's coming from the revolving account.
Yeah, no, they're waiting for their checks. That's all. Thank you, Derek.
Yep, they'll be on the way, folks. Patrick?
No, you know, actually, I've had not a single complaint this week, and I'm pretty happy about it. So let's move on.
Yep. Jim?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass.
All right, Judy?
Nope, no comment.
Yeah, the one comment I will make is that if Facebook is your barometer for the level of complaints, it seems to be calming down quite a bit. ABC is starting to get ABC is starting to get the old barrels. There's still some concern with the old companies that didn't pick up their barrels and are now basically trying to stick the people with the barrels. But I don't know that there's a town solution for that. But, you know, we're, what, six weeks into this? And, you know, considering how big an undertaking it was, I'd like to thank the Town Administrator and the Director of Municipal Maintenance, the Municipal Maintenance Department Employees and the employees in Town Hall who've pitched in to try to make this work. It's really been a big effort. It's a tough undertaking. You're bound to screw up ten percent of it right out of the gate when you do anything this big. It doesn't matter if you're a private company, public, who it is. A big rollout like this doesn't go smoothly. And so I think we're in the, we're at the point now where it's starting to gel, it's come together and I think all those people did a great job on it. So thank you. Continued discussion regarding Boys and Girls Club closure and alternatives. So we'd like to bring in Shayla Tavars, the Bridge Church, Jared Chadwick and Joanne Gamble.
So it's Pastor Ferrari.
Yeah, that's, that's the Bridge Church.
Hello, Jared.
Evening, everyone.
Evening, Jared.
Hello, Pastor.
Hi.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need Shayla as well.
And Joanne.
And Joanne.
Joanne.
There's Joanne. Where's Shayla? Bob, we need Shayla as well.
Shayla Tavars.
Jared, is that a glue-on mustache? I didn't think you had that earlier in the day when I saw you.
No, I'm regrowing it because last, last week when they won the competition, the girls bet that if they won that they'd get to shave it. So there's actually a video on Facebook of them shaving, of my niece shaving it in front of all forty athletes.
Isn't that nice?
Okay, so we've got everybody. Judy, I'll let you lead off. You can start with your impressions of what we discussed today and then they can talk about their proposal.
This morning, we met with the pastor, Jared, Joanne and Shayla, as well as Mr. Swat from the school committee at Hammond School and we had a, it really was a roundtable conversation about what everyone who has been displaced by the closing of the Boys and Girls Club abruptly a couple of weeks ago, what impact that has had on the community and who has stepped up on behalf of the community. And I think what we're going to hear tonight is a summary of what people have done and what people are hoping to do. And I think the pastor is going to be speaking first and then each of the other individuals you see will be speaking as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to the pastor now so he can talk about sort of the proposal he put together and just so everybody understands what the process it would be. What we're hearing tonight is an idea. The town hasn't done anything yet in terms of whether we decide to do a request for proposals or not. That would take a vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize that. The Town Administrator would put one forward. It would have to be, stay open for thirty days. Proposals received have to be opened and, you know, the most advantageous one gets to use the building, whatever portion of the building is LCRFP. So with that in mind, Judy and I did meet with the pastor. We met with Shayla, Joanne and Jared earlier today. They, they talked about sort of a general idea of what they were looking to do. So we had a little bit of a head start. So I'll, I'll let the pastor start off and then each of you can, can add in as you want as well. So Pastor, please take it away.
Great, thank you so much. First, first of all, on behalf of our four organizations that are represented here in this proposal, I just, I just want to say thank you to all of you for including us in the discussion here. We are honored to be a part of what is going on with the Hammond School and to be included in the conversation is a real honor and we're all excited about what the future holds for that building and for our community, regardless of what is decided and how it looks. We're just really excited to see how that goes and what it means for our community. So thank you again for allowing us to dream and be a part of it. Our organization's Community Youth Empowerment, Wareham Tigers, the Bridge Church and the Budding Onset Kids Block were tasked with collaborating on an idea to collaborate on a potential solution for use of the Hammond School. And so we, we got together, we put our, our thoughts together and our, our goals really were to come up with a solution that began to meet the needs of the children and youth in the community, but also set the bar high for the future, to, to dream big and to, to believe for some things that maybe we don't quite see yet, but that we are believing for in the future. And so we really feel like we've come up with something that's a great starting point. It, it is an idea and it's something that we are excited to present tonight. So I know all of you, I think, received the, the package that we sent out. I don't want to just read through it or anything like that, but I'll touch on the high points and, and kind of share my thoughts with you. As we met and, and spoke with, with some of you selectmen, we really felt as though there was a need for a central organization to be the administrator of the property, that there needed to be a strong hub, for, for lack of a better term. And so after, after talking with the group, the, the Bridge Church has put forth the idea of establishing a separate LLC that we're calling the Hammond Community Youth and Education Center at the Bridge, would be a separate, a separate nonprofit from the church with a separate mission. However, it would be run and, and managed by the church. Its mission would be to provide the people of Wareham and onset with a well-operated facility to serve the community through partnership with local organizations. And so basically because of our proximity to the, to the property, our ability to manage multiple properties, which we already do, we feel like we are uniquely positioned to be able to be that administrative part. Our collaborating partners, of course, are, are the, our Community Youth Empowerment with the Wareham Tigers and Onset Kids Block, which you're going to hear from in just a few moments. I'll touch on a few of the community needs that we feel like we're going to meet with this. The first one you see there is the education and academic programs and I'll, I'll touch on this because I know there are challenges related to what the building can be used for. And so we really felt like that needed to be a focus and we did that in a number of ways with the, with the programs that we feel like we can begin to put in place, but also through the name, we felt like using the name Hammond would be a great touch to the past. There's such a rich history with the property, such a rich history there with the school, that that would be a real good starting point for where we want to go in the future. And so we, through the three organizations you're going to hear from and through their, their dreams and vision, you're going to hear a lot about education, academic programs. We also feel like the, the building itself has been underutilized in the past and that there's a lot of other community groups, a lot of other activities that can go on there from physical recreation to senior programs to other types of citizen engagement programs and of course, a venue for private use as well. This, this new organization or this, this new nonprofit that we want to start would be the organizational operational structure. It would provide management, it would provide the administration, facility maintenance and be the, the driving force behind the capital investment for remodeling and upgrading the facility, which we all know it desperately needs. And so as you read through our packet, of course, those are things that, that the details of that would get worked out as different things like leases and stuff are talked about. I didn't include any assumptions about that. And so some of those details obviously would have to get worked out in the future. Now, what would, what would the benefit to us be? Obviously, the big benefit to our organization would be use of the facility on Sunday. So that's what we would be getting in return for all of that. I want to, I want to just reiterate that what we're talking about here is a, a separate nonprofit LLC that would be, have a separate mission, which I read to you, separate mission from the church, but be managed and operated by the church and and it would tap into some of the things that we can use to benefit the property and the organizations that you're going to hear from. Our real, we want to empower the organizations that need to use this property and we want to also dream a little bit about what other types of organization and other types of programs can be, can utilize the space. And so I'll go back to what I said. I really feel like the space has been underutilized and that it can become a source of pride, become a source of, of really being able to meet multiple needs in the community. And the best way, I guess I could, I can describe what I'm talking about to you is through the, through the little graphic of the hub in the back, the, the wheel. So what we're proposing is kind of the hub. And from that come out a bunch of spokes, which are the Wareham Tigers, of course, Community Youth Empowerment and Onset Kids Block. I'll make one quick comment about Onset Kids Block. We are, we are supporting Shayla and, and her dreams and, and her vision for this. She's just getting things kind of straight in her, in her mind. And so we have kind of left two options on the table for her. One is to support her in starting a whole brand new LLC or corporation to do this, or what she wants to do could fall under this LLC that I'm proposing as well. So there, there really are two options for that and that, the determination of that would come a little bit later. But we also want to see future education and academic programs. We, we really believe we can do some things for seniors out of that, out of that property, of course, physical recreation, more public activity. All of those things that can be spokes that come out of that hub. So that is the, the vision from, from our end of things, having Community Youth and Education Center at the Bridge. Now I want to give each of, each of my team members a moment to just kind of share their part of it and their vision and what they can bring in terms of programs to it. Let's, Joanne, I'm going to toss it over to you first.
Sure, just give me one second. So I'm just going to pull up kind of my mission statement real quick. I know you guys all have it, but I just want to read it to the town, just in case anybody doesn't really know about CYE yet. So we are a local community organization that provides skills, knowledge and mentorship to middle and high school students. We strive to collaborate with community leaders and provide resources to uplift, support and ensure youth's success. Our organization offers high school internships to display youth leadership in the community into their peers. The foundation of CYE is to exemplify the importance, the importance of giving back by engaging in a multitude of community service events and opportunities. So we do a lot of in-person workshops, pre-COVID. We've been doing since COVID started, all virtual workshops and I'm just going to give a list of some of the workshops we facilitated so far. Professionalism, job readiness, financial literacy, sexual education, career opportunities, career fair. We've gone over college applications, FAFSA, resume building, healthy relationships, mental health, substance abuse and alcoholism, nutrition and fitness, the, the impact of incarceration, racism, voting rights, police interactions and automotive education. We do have participant expectations and the student population is extremely diverse as we all live in Wareham and know the population. Current programs that we're running right now are the Career Readiness Initiative, which are the workshops that are educational. We also hold Youth Leadership Initiative programming, which is offering three to five high school students to engage in CYE and involve themselves in community service opportunities. They receive an internship and a, like a scholarship towards their post-secondary education. And then Voluntary Community Service Initiative, we just collaborate with the community, the high school and other programs in the community to host community events. Some of the events we've done so far and, and mind you, we've just been a program since January of 2020. So we're new, but I, we attract a lot of attention and a lot of people are willing to help in the community, which, which makes us a stronger program. So we've done a holiday toy drive, Thanksgiving dinner, basket drive, a trucker treat. We had, we've had drive-in movie nights. We collaborated with Staples, back-to-school supply drive. We've done the South Coast Farmers' Families Food Box Program, thousand twenty pound boxes of produce. We give it to thirty-five families every Wednesday. We've done onset beach cleanups. We had an onset free food pantry where we collaborated with the help of Shayla and she allowed us to utilize the front of the building to hold a food pantry. Cuts for Heroes, we were given free, free haircuts to any individuals during the pandemic that were like frontline workers, so police department, hospitals and things like that. Cooks for Community, we were giving away a hundred seventy-five mails, hotmails, Monday through Friday for eight-week period to senior citizen population and low social, socioeconomic families. We've helped and volunteered at Nights of Hospitality, Homeless Shelter and we also hosted a Wareham alumni basketball game. So where I think that we can really tie in for social justice is we're trying to implement and we're planning to implement a program that's facilitated referrals through DYS and the Wareham Court System and hopefully surrounding towns as well, that they would complete our program instead of doing DYS or probation or whatever, they would go to our program, do the workshops, do the community service hours with us and then really get a feel for community and kind of that second chance and hopefully rehabilitative aspect of programming. So we would use the building and be able to really collaborate with other programs and especially the Bridge and also the Kid, Kids Block to facilitate these events, to facilitate this work and most importantly, we would need the school involved too, to get the students to our workshops. So last thing I want to say, we have the support. We've had workshops where we have twenty kids, virtual. This is after they're in school all day on Zoom and they still come to our workshops. And then we've had, obviously, the workshops where we have two to three. But when we have career fairs or guest speakers, our last event was a career fair. We broke out and to break our rooms on Zoom and they were all from Wareham. We had doctors, we had nurses, we had law enforcement, military. And they were all people who were around our age, who went through Wareham Public Schools and explained their path to wherever they got. And that resonates with students and we had about twenty to twenty-five people there talking about that. But we didn't have that many students. So that's where we need to kind of bridge the gap for the school system and CYE. But I think utilizing that building along with the other three individuals in this, in the Zoom right now, I think, I think the best thing to do right now is, is reach, like Pastor keeps saying it, like dreaming big, like this is the perfect opportunity right now. But that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Jared?
Evening again. I'll start by reading our mission statement as well. I know you guys have it in front of you, but for those who don't at home. Wareham Tigers Athletic Association is committed to providing each participant, both football and cheer, with enjoyable learning experience. Excuse me. We are dedicated to improve the skills of each participant through good coaching, practice and competition. We understand that the primary reason young athletes participate in sports is to have fun while competing with each other. We believe every athlete matters and our mission is to provide the opportunity and training necessary for all to learn. for all to learn and compete on his or her greatest ability. We believe in promoting volunteer services with the community of Wareham and selling the value of camaraderie and selflessness. We will strive for academic achievement for every participant, believing that the academics and sports are equal in shaping our participants' future. Finally, we believe that while competing to win is important, the greater value lies in competing with honor, practicing good sportsmanship and being gracious in victory and defeat. As for the Wareham Tigers using, uh, the Hammond Building, like I said the last week, we've been using the facility, uh, for our cheer competition program, which this past season had, uh, close to 50 athletes. And we are anticipating, uh, actually up to about 100 athletes, uh, coming up for this upcoming season. And not only do we anticipate on, uh, more athletes coming in for us, but we also anticipate on, uh, doing workshops, uh, with, uh, Shayla and the Bridge and, um, CYE out of the Hammond Building as well. I believe that all of our programs, uh, combined at this facility is just gonna lead to a better future for all of the youth in, in our, in our town. It's a centrally located place and it's, it's something that I think with all of our programs working together, nothing's gonna stop us. I think we'll be phenomenal. I'll keep it short and sweet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Shayla?
Hi, I'll start with my mission statement. Onset Kids Block wants to provide and transform community-based services and programs for the families of Onset and Wareham. We aim to help those who need us the most through after-school mentoring and summer program, programming to ensure everyone has the opportunity to reach their full potential regardless of life circumstances and challenges. Our implemented programs and practices will provide equal access and enable all students to thrive emotionally, socially, athletically and academically. What I would bring to the table is being able to supervise and come up with programs and execute them with the children or anyone in the community. Some of my ideas would be a cooking program, a chemistry program, hip-hop dance, Wareham History, gardening club, photography, graphic design, yoga, tutoring, a fine, fine arts program. Some of these we've already run with the Boys and Girls Club, which I can carry over due to my connections to volunteers and, and other people in the community. The Onset Bay Center is offering our kids programming, starting this week, twice a week for two hours, free of cost. So we already have that program that's in walking distance. We just bring the kids right down. We've also partnered with Big Brother, Big Sister at Mass Maritime Academy. So my goal is to reach out to them to, you know, get some more matches from our new group of kids to keep that, that mentoring program going since it's the only one in Cape Cod for one-on-one mentoring. We also wanna incorporate music, gymnastic, gymnastics and physical fitness. We have access to the Hammond Playground and the Lopes Playground. So we have many courts and fields to do many activities such as tennis, soccer, basketball tournaments, ultimate frisbee, cricket, archery. The possibilities are really endless of what we can do out there, including outdoor fundraising events. So I think all of us coming together and the shutdown was kind of a blessing in disguise to get everyone on the same page and actually support something for Wareham that we run ourselves. So I think it would be a great outcome.
Thank you. Uh, before we start, one, one, one fact that we, we should mention is that Jeff Swett of, uh, recently re-elected to the school committee came and spoke of the, uh, school administration's possible interest in using that area as well for programs and so on and so forth. I don't wanna characterize, well, actually, you know what, why don't we just bring Jeff in and, and he can speak to that briefly, if he is watching, so I don't have a problem with him, him just mentioning, uh, sort of some, some rough ideas that, that were discussed in terms of possible collaboration with the school department and seeing whether they could be, be, you know, a potential financial and, and youth partner as well. So Jeff?
Good evening, everybody. Um, yes, it would be probably more appropriate for the superintendent to be here, but I'm glad to stand in her place. Fundamentally, we're talking about taking a portion of what is known as, as the CARE program and bringing it to Onset. And the advantage, of course, is that, um, all of the CARE programs now are located in the schools and this would create a, a place for On, for the Onset community and the Onset kids who always have transportation issues to come and get a highly structured licensed certified program from skilled educators, uh, for preschool, after-school, um, and summer programs. So it's something the superintendent is quite serious about doing. And, um, as a school committee member, uh, I can tell you, um, I am not only, only one vote, but I've been only on the school committee a couple of days. And to my knowledge, this idea has not been presented to the school committee before. So we would obviously, um, consider it in due course when the superintendent decided to, uh, make her recommendations to us. But, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, but as I said, I think, uh, the superintendent probably would be the better person to actually come forward and, and speak with more specificity.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, I'll turn it over to the board for questions, uh, for any of the...
Dr. Shaverhood is there.
Oh, is she?
Yes.
Voila.
You're muted.
The wonders of Zoom.
You're muted.
Hey, all right. Goodness. Hello. Uh, yes, I've been talking, we've been talking, uh, among the school personnel, also the, the YMCA and looking at doing a joint venture. We were meeting this week to have a further discussion. One of the things that we're, we were interested in pursuing is providing some opportunities for our students in the Onset area, but also open it up to adults. Um, and we're also, we're looking at doing some adult programming. We also have had a discussion about expanding to include preschool and looking at expanding, um, our preschool program to a location in Onset. We're just in the beginning stages. We're networking with some other agencies as well. And I had a conversation with Pastor Dave yesterday and, uh, it sounds like they're a little bit farther along than what we are. And as I said with him, to him, we're interested in doing what we can for our students in the Wareham and doing the very best that we can. So.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alan?
You're muted.
Good evening again. Uh, we've been discussing this, uh, probably for about a week and a half when the initial program came up, actually when Kenny Fons was, uh, terminated. So it goes back over quite a while ago. What we have, that we have to figure out is what is sustainable, uh, and what is gonna be, you know, good, solid stability. Uh, the school has an after chaos program, which Jeff kinda mentioned very quickly. And it has all the requirements from the state as far as different licensing and specifications that it needs. Uh, we have almost an over an abundance of options here and I'm hoping that somehow or another we can put it all together and make it work that everybody is there. But I think, for me in the long term, I think this is something the school is gonna have to run simply because of the assets it has. And just as another piece of the information, today at the, uh, my Mass Municipal Association meeting, uh, it was announced that the state is gonna provide, uh, trace, what they call summer training for students who have basically lost out on some of their education over the last year of COVID. Uh, this particular fund is $70 million, uh, which is a substantial amount of money, which could also help us going ahead with this program. This program will fit right into what they're looking at. So there's a lot of options here. You just have to come up with something that everybody can participate. But at the end of the day, something that actually can be sustainable, not just for the next six weeks, but for the, probably the next 50 years really. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick?
So, uh, thank you all for, uh, stepping up here. It's amazing how, uh, everybody's come together. You know, it's, it's, it's such a great thing to see. You know, everybody coming together to help out in the community and, and work with the children, especially, you know, I, nobody knew how this was gonna end up and I, I kinda think that everybody kinda thought it would just go away. But obviously, no one's willing to let that happen and that is just totally awesome. And thank you so much for all stepping up and, uh, hopefully it'll all come to pass, um, with what you have in mind. I, I just totally, uh, love what I'm hearing. It's just awesome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim?
Hi, um, I wanna echo the sentiments of Mr. Tropiano. Thanks for coming together, coming up with some great ideas. I think the main thing is you're looking for space and, um, right now that, that seems like the brass ring to grab. I've looked at the building a couple of times, more of the structure of the building and the cost for, um, upgrading and renovation. So I think it's great, um, for short term, I don't know about long term and the cost to, to upgrade it, to make it handicap accessible and safe for fire and whatnot. I would have to leave that up to, I guess, our town administrator, along with some other things. But, I mean, move forward and, and see what we can come up with and we'll, we'll speak with our town administrator about the process of which, um, Mr. Titlebaum spoke of earlier, which is not, you know, like next week or the week after. So, um, be patient and we'll see what we can come up with and, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Yes, I think it's important for people to realize that the Bridge Church actually has been running this, uh, program for the past week and two days, um, with Shayla in charge, I guess. And so I wanna make everyone aware that the community already has stepped up on a stopgap basis and, and I very much appreciate that. I think that, I mean, it's terrific. What's also awesome is that there's so many really good ideas and so many awesome programs that are, that are different, that are, you know, they're, they're Wareham-centric, they're Onset-centric, they're, they're aimed at, at our kids. And the nicest part of the whole thing is that the average age pastor you're excluded from this conversation.
Oh, man.
Of the people who are actively working here is something like 32. And I just, I'm impressed. I'm impressed that every one of them, well, two of them are Wareham High School graduates. I, I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled that the community has come together and trying to put together something that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it was a good meeting today. You know, I am mindful that sustainability has to be part of the equation. I also think, you know, we have to, uh, look at supporting grassroots efforts as well and that's what sort of sprung up, uh, even before we got involved. And so I, I think this, you know, needs to be, uh, a continued process, uh, of discussion. Uh, we sort of know what the, the loose overall parameters of, of, uh, the proposal from the four proponents is at this point. I think we need to keep this on an agenda for whoever sets the agenda next. And I think we need to, this is something we need to, to keep at. Uh, I will note that the pastor, uh, once he heard the, you know, procurement issues and so on and so forth, he did generously offer to, uh, extend to Shayla and, and, uh, the kids program further use beyond the six weeks that, that his, uh, church had originally committed to. So we're thankful for that, uh, and that he's trying to look into the future. Uh, these things do take time. Uh, you know, now we have, the, the school's getting involved so that I'm sure there's gonna be some back and forth in terms of, uh, what the uses might be and who's involved. But we, we appreciate the fact that you've stepped up and you, and you continue to, to wanna do this. So, uh, again, it's gonna be up to the next chairman, uh, whether this, when this goes on an agenda. I would ask whoever that is to put it on an agenda and to invite these same, same people back for a discussion next week. So with that in mind, is there anything, uh, in closing anyone wants to offer? No, everybody's good? Great. Well, thank you all for coming. Uh, we look forward to hearing from you again very soon.
Thank you.
Good work, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's see, now we still have the superintendent here for the discussion and vote to authorize submission of a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for Wareham Middle School roof replacement.
Yes, thank you. So I come before you this evening asking for your vote to authorize a submission to the Mass, Massachusetts School Building Authority, a statement of interest for both the Wareham Middle School roof replacement and the High School Boiler replacement. Just to give a little background, the middle school roof has approximately 53,000 square feet of single-ply rubber membrane roofing and it's rapidly aging and is in dire need of replacement. If you recall, uh, back in 2009, we shut down the middle school for eight days because of flood and that was because of a tear to the roof. One year later, we had to do it again. This time we just had to close a wing and move students around. It is at the point of failing. We anticipate the approximate cost would be about $1.5 million. The second one would be the High School Boiler Replacement. These are the original boilers. There's six boilers and they're over 30, they're 30 years old. And right now, they're basically beyond repair. There are only two boilers working and they're starting to break apart and we're unable to find replacement parts because of the age. We anticipate this approximate cost would be $250,000. By moving ahead and asking the MSBA to, uh, allow us into the, uh, the replacement program, then we, uh, some of the money would be offset by the Mass Building Authority. Again, we have no idea if we would be accepted. This is just a submission of interest. To do this, I need both the Board of Selectmen's vote and the school committee vote. I'll be taking this to the school committee, their next meeting, May 20th for their vote.
Thank you. Uh, questions on the board? Alan?
Uh, first question, do we know what the percentage reimbursement will be? Or we haven't got to that yet?
No, we haven't got to that.
Okay, just for reference, I'm probably wrong. I don't think the roof is on the capital plan at all as of right now. That probably should get in there because I don't think it's on the plan at all.
Right, we had other things ahead, but because of some COVID money that we've received and then the capital, the 500,000 in free cash that, or, yeah, the free cash that we were given, we've been able to make the majority of the HVAC repairs ourself, so this is now moving up.
It just needs to get into the capital plan, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Patrick?
Well, I tell ya, I, I can't, she just said, mentioned that the boilers are 30 years old in that building. It seems to me like yesterday when we built that building, it was, uh, we built that in the library, if everybody remembers, and it was, uh, you know, it seems like yesterday. I don't know, 30 years went by pretty fast. I don't know where it went, but it's gone. And, uh, you know, I'm sure it does need repair. And I believe, wasn't the roof being destroyed by seagulls dropping, uh, uh, stuff onto the roof and actually tearing into the rubber? If I'm not mistaken, wasn't that part of our problem?
Yes, that's a true statement. In fact, we have it inspected about once a month now because the seagulls continue to like to drop their shells on the roof and, um, that's the only way we can make the repairs.
I think we're gonna have to start charging them rent or something up there. I don't know. But it's too bad we couldn't, right? Yeah, well, I'm, I'm totally in favor of this. I think the quicker we get it on the list, the better. I know that you've been fighting that roof for quite a while and like I said, maybe there's something, uh, in the process that they can come up with to sort of, whether it's to hang a net across or something to keep them from dropping their, uh, to keep them from dropping their, uh, because it's actually the shells that cut into the roof, not the seagulls themselves. So it might be, uh, maybe if it got, they figured out how to put, lay a net up there or something to keep them from actually hitting the roof. I don't know. But, uh, there's gotta be some plan. Maybe that can be figured into the mix somehow and protect it. Because, I mean, they're gonna go back with another rubber roof. There's probably no question about it. Rubber's sort of the way to go. Um, so it is what it is. But yeah, I'm in favor of this without a doubt.
Thank you. Jim?
Oh, you know, it's really normal maintenance and long-term capital replacement. So I don't have a problem with that. Just a quick question. Any thoughts of, um, doing solar? Uh, could we utilize that, those buildings for that? If you're gonna do the roofs, this would be the time to do it. If it's feasible and economically beneficial.
It would help us protect from the seagulls.
It'd bounce off instead of the shells. What are they looking to crack the shells so they can eat them?
Yeah. They, they think it's like the parking lot. That, I hear, I hear, uh, truck roofs being pinged all summer long by the seagulls down here at Tempest Knot. They park, they launch their boats, and they come back and there's a dent in their roof. Uh, because, because they just, the seagulls just, just bomb them. Uh, so it is a real problem?
I'm good with this.
Okay, thanks.
You know, you know, Peter, can I just say one thing? So, uh, you know, if the solar idea is a great idea, uh, unfortunately, it's problematic because we have all our certain solar credits, sort of gone. So, uh, you know, I just don't understand that whole thing, how they can limit us. You know, we wanted to put some solar out at the, as the, um, the sewer treatment plant to help, uh, you know, obviously, it uses a great deal of electricity, it would have been nice. And it wasn't feasible because, again, our solar credits, and you can't sell any credits now. And, uh, because they're just not, not valuable enough. And so it's problematic. And it's too bad because, like you say, that's, this is a perfect idea, Jim, and this is the perfect time to go ahead and do something like this. And I don't know, maybe we gotta try to figure a way around that somehow at some point.
I think we really need to look at it, um, if it is feasible or isn't feasible. We have private companies out there utilizing tax, uh, incentives and, you know, paying leases and, and paying personal property taxes on the, on the property, you know, the equipment and making a profit. So there's something missing in that equation for us.
Definitely.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
So, so just on that one, just so people understand, we couldn't use the electricity. We've maxed out on what, what we can do. That's with the, the, the arrangement with Lupomus from Plymouth that we signed up with seven years, roughly seven years ago. We're sort of ahead of the game, but we locked in. That's so we couldn't use it as a town, just so everybody understands the, so what would happen is we would utilize that electricity, then we would have to pay the difference to basically Lupomus. So, yeah, I, I don't know if, we kinda go over this every six months, so.
Yeah, it's true.
When does, when does that agreement end?
Twenty-three years, I believe, from now.
Great, I'll be dead. And on the, and on the baby on the board.
Hope not.
That's a very good sign for the rest of you.
So is that on all municipal property? They, they own the rights to it? Is that what you're saying?
No, they don't own the rights to our property. It's an energy, energy aggregation. So a percentage of all the energy we, all the energy we consume, right? The close to six, seven megawatts, we as a town use. There's a solar facility that generates that, uh, the six to seven megawatts, let's say. And, uh, it's in, located in Plymouth. We signed up with them. So I think we've reached the, so basically, what they do is generate a portion of the electricity that we use. We, um, we get billed for that. And then the credits go, go back to, uh, what do you call it? Ever source. But we get to keep a, a little bit of that revenue. I think we're up to, I had double-checked the agreement. I thought we were up to fifteen percent now. So that brings in about, uh, about three hundred thousand a year. That's what goes to free cash. So that's, uh, one of the things that we generate money off of. So what happens if we start doing other solar? You start doing other solar, it just eats into the three hundred thousand dollars. So at the end of the day, you're costing yourself money. Because you have to now bridge that gap of the fifteen percent. So.
Right. And we don't pay any electrical bills, you're telling me?
No, we do pay electrical bills.
I thought so.
Right.
Talk about this later. It is not, I just threw it out there. Um, we'll, we'll discuss this, you know, at another time. We don't wanna keep Mr. Shabelhood.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to think about it, Jim, is for every one dollar we spend electricity, we save fifteen cents.
Yeah, but we'll talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually twenty cents.
Are we up to twenty now?
We're twenty and then we're twenty-five. I think the total contract was twenty-five years.
Okay, no, thanks. Uh, Judy?
I'm ready to make a motion. I think it's, um, we've all said everything that we need to say. And clearly, there is a need for both of those, um, improvements. May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a letter of support for the submission of statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Wareham Middle School Roof Replacement, as well as the, um, Wareham High School Boiler Replacement.
Second.
Hey, motion to authorize by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick? Microphone, Patrick?
Oh, yeah, second. I mean, yeah, yes, sorry. I had said second at the same time, so.
Oh, okay, a second on the brain.
Obviously, nobody heard me.
There you go. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Kim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down the agenda, uh, we have ratified hirings here.
I move to ratify the hiring of Sean Diaz, Seasonal Community Service Officer for Parking Enforcement. James White, Senior, Part-Time Laborer at the Transfer Station. Theodore Nagel, Part-Time Laborer at the Transfer Station. Bridget Denoyt, Full-Time Department Assistant with the Treasurer Collector's Office. And that's it.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero to, uh, point. And welcome aboard to those people. Vote to appoint member to Joint Transportation Planning Group. I think we know who this is and what that's about.
I move to appoint Alan Slaven to the Joint Transportation Planning Group.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Abstain.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero one. Alan abstaining. Uh, Appointment of Serpent Delegate.
Move to appoint Alan Slaven to the Serpent Delegate.
Here, motion by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Uh, roll call, vote. Alan?
Abstain.
Patrick?
Second. I mean, yes.
He's got second on the brain.
I do, yeah. I'm, uh, in another world here today.
You are. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero one with Alan abstaining. Uh, Process of Determining Future Use of Deacon's School. I, I just put this on there because, you know, as, as, uh, Richard Swenson was talking about, uh, earlier, he kinda summed it up, I think, pretty well. You know, perhaps the process should have been redevelopment authority, uh, meet with Board of Selectmen first, uh, before going to Serpent. Because it seems we're hearing a, a divergence of, of different ideas for using the property, which is fine. I mean, it's, this is a decision to be made by the board. And, you know, there's, there's obviously multiple viewpoints. Uh, so I'll start off with, uh, with Alan. What do you think we should do for a process here?
We're gonna have to kind of evaluate what we're gonna do. But the problem is, this is very much like some of the stuff we've been dealing with lately. Uh, it's not conservation, we're just economics, but it's, uh, services for the town, providing for a location versus, you know, basically leasing out the property for economic development or selling it, uh, for long term. Because obviously, it's in a key location from where the center of Wareham is slowly moving to, which is West Wareham. So it's a tough decision. Obviously, I've been pushing for a community center for quite a few years now. So I'm leaning that way. But of course, the Serpent Organization came up with a different idea for economic benefits for the town. So it's gonna have to be weighed back and forth. Obviously, I'd like to see a community center where they have, you know, facilities for, you know, people having other meeting halls and everything else. But at the same time, if we go ahead and go that way, how do we fund that and make it sustainable long term? So there's a lot of questions to be answered.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, uh, we've had a couple of evaluations. Uh, we had some people in and so on and so forth. And, you know, I think there's some work to be done here for sure. I mean, I know there's a lot of push by the community, uh, some people in the community to use that building for a community center. I'm not so sure that's the best use of it, especially in the, in, in, uh, in its location and everything else. Um, and not to mention that we do have a lot of facilities now. And that's just gonna, imagine if we have to run that building after the school doesn't have anymore. We gotta keep that building up and running. That's gonna cost us a bunch of money. I mean, not a little money, a whole lot of money. Just the maintenance alone, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's a big building to take care of. So, I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. Maybe it can be a community center. I don't know. I need a lot more information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim?
Yeah, I know we did a study. That was a economic development study. It wasn't just like a study for what would the best use be? So I think we have to look at it in, in different, you know, we have to look at it in a broader sense and, like a cross-section of what the uses or possibilities would be. And, you know, you're talking about community center, senior center. It could also facilitate use by some of the groups that were talking tonight. It's a much newer facility than the Hammond School, much better shape. It meets safety needs, I believe, and, and also, um, building, you know, building codes, uh, which would be required and, um, you know, and, and then as Patrick said about these other buildings, now you have the West School. You have the Everett School. You got the Hammond School, a, a building, which is, what's a hundred and something years old. Roof needs replacement. The boiler's older than me, I think. I don't know about the electrical. I, I didn't get to go through the, um, Donovan Center side. I know there's no fire suppression in the wooden structure. So, um, you know, we, we have to look at the properties we have, uh, in, overall, and, and, and start getting rid of some of them or, or make them useful. And, um, I, I think, um, I spoke about, as, as Mr. Swenson spoke about earlier, you know, process, I spoke about that, um, in the Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Trust meeting. You know, we have to have a process to get there. And, uh, I thank him for bringing that up. And, um, we have to give it some more discussion and thought, and just, just not Deacon's, but all of these facilities, and start getting rid of some of them if we're not gonna use them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Mr. Muniz just said exactly what I was, have said all along in the WRA meetings. The question is not what we're going to do, but how are we going to come to this decision? And, um, that's what I think we need to focus on. And in the WRA meetings, I keep saying, we are not in the, uh, job, we're not in the position to own a lot of real estate. And we do. We need to get rid of all of the buildings that are not currently being used by the town and/or the school. And there's a lot of them. And we know that. Some of them are under the control of the Selectmen, some of them are under the control of the school, and some of them are under the control of, we're not really sure yet, but we're exploring that. So I think, I think really, as Mr. Muniz has said, it's, we need to decide on how we make these decisions, not what the decision is going to be.
I think that's a fair point. And it's almost like we should take a step back and look at all the, look at all the, the structures we own that we don't necessarily want to hang on to because we're not in a position to take care of them. And come up with, you know, where do we, where do we think things should be in twenty years? Uh, are some of these properties that we wanna hang on to because we can envision a use for them in twenty years? Are some of the properties so dilapidated that we just wanna get rid of them? What are the, the restrictions on use in terms of how the town originally acquired the property? Some of them were deemed restricted to educational purposes and so forth. Or there was reverter clauses, if a certain use, uh, which land was given is no longer, uh, being used. So, you know, there, there's a lot that goes into this. So it, it, it's kind of interesting that, you know, we're, we're, we, we've got a couple of different things you would think on the agenda, uh, that have sort of dovetailed into one discussion here. To Jim's point about utilizing, uh, the building for some of the, the social needs, I, I think one of the things that came out of the discussion tonight is that, onset is, is a bit different in that it's hard for the onset kids to get transportation anywhere. I know Jeff Swett mentioned that. So for, for, so for, so for onset, I think it's important to have something in onset that, that deals with some of those youth needs, the social needs and so forth. But that doesn't mean that the town can't, uh, you know, create the sort of, uh, space, uh, on the Deacon's School property to, to accommodate those things. I mean, how many acres are out there? It's gotta be like, what, fifteen anyway?
Well, yeah, and it's seven thousand square feet of, of, of building space.
How big?
You know, it's a large structure and it's, it's not, not in bad shape. The boilers are new, roofs are fairly new. To me, that's something, um, would cost an awful lot to replace. And I think you got a good twenty or thirty years' use out of it, minimally. With a lot less, a, a lot less funds going into it than other structures in town. But that's just, that's another story, another day.
Yep.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I would suggest that we have a next step discussion. And figure out exactly what is it we are going to do. Because I can see this going, you know, going on and on and on and on and on. So could we perhaps say that, uh, next week, we will have all reviewed the proposal by Serpents and come to the table with some alternative, um, suggestions? And then we go forward or we, we take, um, a real look at all of the town-owned properties, which include other buildings, which could be reused for particularly, um, affordable housing. I've been harping on that one for the West Wareham School. So I, I, I would like to really try and get us to commit to take a step. I don't know what the step is, but let's, let's lay out how we're going to get there.
I think we need to get some of Derek's input on this too. And, uh, you know, in my opinion, and, uh, you know, he could supply us with the, the list of all the other buildings. I mean, some of us know what they are, but we should have it in front of us, you know, of all the different buildings. I know that the, uh, the, uh, well, I call it the Little Red School, if everybody, you know. I know it's the Everett Center, but I call it Little Red School because that's what it was originally, right? And, um, so it, it, uh, you know, that, that building, I think, is in pretty dire strait. And, um, we, once upon a time, I think we even talked about trying to get rid of it. And, uh, it's just not even, it doesn't seem viable to even get rid of it. So we, we'd have to, have, do some serious thinking about, you know, basically, we've got a lot here, is what it sounds like. And whoever buys it's gonna have to take down the building. So, uh, but it's not a bad space. I mean, look where it is, right? Right there at the common and the whole thing. I mean, it's kind of a nice spot. Um, and who knows?
I love your sales pitch for the, for the people that are interested in the building.
Well, you, you know, uh, look, we all know what the condition of the building is. Anybody who walks through that building knows what the condition of that building is. It, it, you know, you can, you can't sell somebody, uh, snake- Uh, snake oil, you know what I mean? It's just not, it's not a viable thing. Uh, but at any rate, um, you know, all those buildings need to be on a list. We need to see what they are, and then we need to see what the town administrator's idea is of what he'd like to see done with the buildings as well. Because certainly he's, he has to play a role in that, in my opinion.
So could we suggest, may I suggest that in two weeks, we have a list of. Um, I'm not talking about an acre of woods off, you know, wherever. I'm talking about buildings. That the town, either the um, either you, the town administrator, or the Board of Selectmen. Or possibly the school have control of that are, will use the word surplus. And that would be a first step in taking stock of what we have and then being able to move forward.
Is there a reason why two weeks?
We wanna do it in one?
Town meeting, why don't we relax? See, the selectmen are putting a lot of stuff forward.
Yeah.
Policy decisions and every, I, and I'm just trying to figure out, are you thinking that? Action's gonna make this happen better? I, I feel like we're putting a lot of carts before the horses. Let's slow down, let's prioritize. I still don't even have a list of the selectman priorities. And, and you, you know, we're just kind of bouncing around here, folks, so.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
Okay, let's make some priorities, please.
Let's um, I, I agree with what you're saying, but we, we can put a list together of town properties. I don't, I don't know if that's a, a, a difficult task. And it's a start. And our priorities, I think the next chairman um should get a list from the selectmen and, and work towards that. And uh, set the priorities for this next year and, and going forward. But um, that, that's a good idea, and it's something we haven't done in about three years. I, I don't know, two years, three years. So um, that's all. Thanks.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Sullivan, and I guess I would say to all of us. Clearly, the priority is Deacon's, because the use it is being, the use. Is going to come to an end very shortly. You know, the, the town use of it. It is a major piece of real estate. It is a central piece of real estate. So maybe the thing to do is to have this board. You know, look at that particular item. Yes, Mr. Sullivan, we have town meeting, we have everything. We, we're, we're really jamming ourselves up here. But I think that possibly, just looking at Deacon's. Um, is a very helpful thing. Mr. Muniz has made the effort to go through the building. We have a um, a report, a very lengthy report with specific recommendations. And I think that we need to look at the information that we have already. And, and maybe move forward on that. And the, again, um, the, the question is, yeah, there are a lot of great ideas, but how are we gonna figure out which one is? The right one?
Well, we're gonna talk about it like we all do, and we're gonna come up with a decision in the end. Uh, you know, and we'll argue about it, and we'll do what we need to do until we get it right. We always do.
I think we need to basically take a little bit of time, go through each one of the properties, take a look at what we actually have. And then start to work on it, but you know, we can get a basic list, and it's up to the five of us to travel around. And, and, and this is the property over the next month or so. Get past town meeting and, and move on.
I think what Derek was trying to say was he's trying to get through town meeting. But Jim, and he's pretty, you know, you know, he's pretty out there when he's trying to get ready for town meeting and get everything ready and into there. So maybe that's, you know, maybe he'd feel better if we kind of got through that before we started to. You know, I mean, this is a big undertaking, let's face it, to look at all the properties and, you know, sort of try to come up with some way to deal with them and so on and so forth, so. You know, I guess.
Thank you.
See us taking baby steps on it anyway.
Thank you, Patrick. And part of this stems from the W R A had wanted to put out a bid. And I um, I, you know, how could we legally put it out to bid for Deacon's when we don't even control it? One, it's still a school building, and then two, who in their right mind would bid on it if we don't even know what we really want there?
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll come back to it at some future point, I guess. Uh, continue discussion of vote to recommend articles for twenty twenty-one annual Springtown Meeting. We do have uh Mr. Flaherty here tonight. So if we could bring him forward, so we could talk about the renaming of the school article.
Which is Article twenty-five on the regular.
That's right. So let's have Mike Flaherty join us, please. Here he is. There he was. Good evening.
Good evening, and, and um, I don't know if it's possible, can you also, if there's, if they're still on, bring forward um Rhonda Vugan and Joyce Paciacci?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's fine. We usually just hear from the lead petitioner, however.
Okay.
Uh, but if she's got some remarks you think are, are important, that's fine as well, so if you wanna bring her in.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, um, so I wanted to start off by first thanking the board for um vo- voting to support this article. The last time I, I appeared before the board. Um, I think I'll, I'll just start the way I did the last time and just read the article and see if there's any further questions. Um, nothing's really, nothing has changed. It's just I knew a town meeting date, uh, same board members, so, but I'm, I'm happy to, 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 to do this. Uh, so I'll read the warrant article. It's uh, the title is um, Naming of the New Elementary School Located at Sixty-three Minored Avenue, Wareham, Mass. Uh, the warrant article, uh, to see if the town will vote to name the new elementary school currently under construction at sixty-three Minored Ave. Is scheduled to open January twenty twenty-two as the quote Wareham Elementary School, end quote. Uh, motion, I moved that the town of Wareham vote to name the new elementary school currently under construction. At sixty-three Minored Ave and scheduled to open January twenty twenty-two as the quote Wareham Elementary School, end quote. And then under the explanation, um, the two elementary schools, John W. Deacon's Elementary School and the Minored Forest Elementary School. Will be relocated into one school. The new building is anticipated to open January twenty twenty-two. And will house all Wareham Elementary students from pre-K to grade four. As students from both elementary schools uh will be merged and form one school. We are requesting the citizens of Wareham vote in support of naming the new building as the quote Wareham Elementary School, end quote. And sorry for the redundancy there and such, but we, we did work with the town council uh in Mr. Slaven uh to, to refine it. You know, as, as much as we could, and it, it is what it is now.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board? I know we've been at this, what, this is the third time?
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah.
I'll make a real quick comment. When we first got this, uh, most of us were not really in favor of changing the name from the original application. Uh, the bottom line is if anybody has seen the layout of the new school, where one portion's being dedicated to the Minored Forest. Minored family, the other portions being dedicated to the Deacon School, I think that resolves the issues at this point. And I have no issue going ahead and making it, making this particular motion. Go ahead with it.
Okay, uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Jim?
The citizen's petition, right?
Yep, so we're just voting a recommendation.
Trouble with it before, I don't now. Thanks.
Okay, Judy?
I don't have any problem with it at all.
Okay, uh, if somebody wants to make a, a motion to recommend or?
Alan just did.
So moved.
Okay, uh, Patrick?
Yeah.
Who seconded? Judy seconded?
Sure.
Doesn't matter.
Sure. Jim said sure for you, so I guess it's you, Judy. Um, okay, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
I'll move to uh a present on this one. You got me halfway there, Mike, this time around.
Oh.
I'm not to- I'm not totally inflexible.
I know. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, so four zero one will be the recommendation that goes uh out to the body at town meeting from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, thank you for your presentation and good luck at town meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, was there anything else uh we were ready to do anything on for the annual?
Did, um.
Hopefully we're all set.
I thought we were all set too.
I mean, it was last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, did we do the Enterprise Fund for Wareham Pollution? Control Facility?
Oh, weren't we waiting for numbers for that?
Yeah, I think we, well, we did, yeah, I thought we were waiting for, for numbers on that, on item. Article ten, the W P C F Enterprise Fund.
Do we have numbers for that, Mr. Town Administrator?
Um, well, I wouldn't have, if you haven't gotten them yet, I wouldn't vote on it tonight, so.
Yeah, so, okay, so we're gonna have to bet.
Yep.
And then the petition article, I don't think we.
The Sola Project?
No, uh, the, I believe it was um.
The NIPS?
The Housing?
The Housing, sir, yeah. The NIPS is on the other one, I believe.
Okay, so on the housing one, we haven't voted to recommend on that one?
That's correct.
Okay, if anybody's ready tonight, they can make a motion, I guess.
I'll, I'll make a motion to um, put the local initiative program, the housing init- local initiative program on the. Warrant.
Okay, motion to recommend?
I mean, it's on there anyhow, yeah.
Yeah, so motion to recommend by Jim and a second by?
Alan.
Alan?
Are we sure that, yeah, that, that is the, yeah, okay, it is the right one, sorry.
Okay.
Chairman, I will tell you, we are getting calls already at the town about five thousand square foot lots. Uh, it's interesting, so already have one gentleman try a cherry pick.
Right, so you know, you know, again, it's, it's an issue, it's a local petition. So we either, we're just voting to recommend or not recommend, right? It's on there anyhow.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's going before the body regardless. This is just our, our vote, whether to recommend or not. Um. Yeah, this is kind of interesting. Uh, I'm, I'm actually much more in favor of the second portion that would. You know, effectively legalize uh prior, you know, in-law apartments and things like that, that, that went up incorrectly. Uh, if nothing else, it would get them on the tax rolls, because at least we'd have an accurate assessment of the properties. And where uh, in order to get that legitimacy, they would have to make them affordable. I, I, I actually like that. I think that, that one's pretty clever. The other one, I don't know. I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, geez, you know, you bought, you bought in a place where it was maybe, you know, five thousand square foot lots. And three or four people in a row bought the fifteen thousand feet. They bought three lots cuz they wanted to plop the house in the middle and have some space on either side or behind them or whatever. And, you know, everybody else around them had done kind of the same thing, then all of a sudden somebody says, hey, wait a minute, I can throw up two more houses, and it, it, it's kinda. I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned that it's going to increase some of the density. I'm concerned in some of the areas of town where you have uh a lot of development already. That, and in some of these areas, let's face it, we're talking the beach communities that have the smaller lots, like Onset, Swiss Beach, places like that. And you're also talking about sewer infrastructure out there, that if the street level is all gonna have to be replaced, is this gonna accelerate that? Uh, is it gonna cause a bigger burden on the town? So that's, that's my concern with the first portion.
May I speak?
Yes.
Um, the Board of Health is actually going to be examining quite closely the, the articles. Because of course, it does impact uh septic possibly, and certainly sewer connection in some instances. So they are going to be um, they, they met last week, so in another week and a half. They'll be talking about what their recommendation would be and their concern would be. Um, about the size of the lots and about whether um, the sewer system is available. Or whether it has to be one of those forty thousand dollar, really spectacular um onsite septic systems.
Or.
Yeah, the nitrogen.
Nitrification.
Nitrification, thank you. So they are going to be weighing in on it.
Patrick?
Okay, so my issues are, are multiple here. First off, um, it's gonna be the most unfair thing that was ever written. First off, there's gonna be people who have in-law apartments, and everybody else is gonna wanna live in-in-law apartment. Because uh, you know, these other people got it, they didn't get it, why can't I have it? And basically, you could end up turning every house that's a single family into a duplex of some kind. In order to have another rental in the thing, whether it's affordable or not, I don't know if you know this, but the affordable price for a rental. Is pretty considerably high. Um, you know, right now, uh, they can get a whole bunch of money and, and I get what they want. I mean, you know, everybody wants to rent and have a little property, but I can't see turning every house into a duplex. That's one of the reasons why we have. Why we have rules and regulations and laws that they'll, they can keep that from happening. And as far as the second port, first portion of it goes, um, this will be. Um, not affect that many lots, just so you know. Uh, the Board of Health is gonna find a lot of problems with, with the uh septic and the size of the lots. Because septic is not available based on the size of the lot. All of Shangri-La, everything in the Shangri-La area that, uh, that probably everybody. Would thought would be, all of a sudden be lots. None of those will become lots, because you need, you need ten thousand square feet per bedroom. And that's a D E P regulation that you can't break. So all of those people with their five thousand square foot lots can't even have a, have a one bedroom. And in fact, if you had ten thousand square feet, you can only have one bed. So that's not, Shangri-La is completely out of it. If you go over to uh Rose Point, you got a similar issue. Same thing with uh, with um, you know, um, a lot, you know, as you know, the water is very close to that. And you got the two hundred feet to the bank and the whole thing, and all of that wouldn't be eligible. I mean, there's just lots of not eligible places. That are, that it's just not gonna work. It might work a few here and there, and it might be okay for some. Um, but you're gonna tick off, a lot of people are gonna say, well, how come I can't do it? Why can't he use his five thousand and gra- grab some money and uh, you know, for whatever? I wanna retire. Why can't I do it and he can't? You know what I'm saying? And this is, this is the problem you're gonna have when you make, when you make a regulation like this. Now, there may be a way to do it with some, uh, some study and stuff and try to figure it out exactly. Uh, you know, so you could make it a little fairer on everybody. I mean, I think, I, I actually think that if you live on a five thousand square foot lot. And there's, you know, three lots next to you, but they don't make a lot. Uh, you know, maybe it's okay. If you could get to the thirty, the thirty thousand and have a three-bedroom house, more power to you, okay? Um, and even though you couldn't, because remember, all of Shangri-La is three acres only, three acres. So that's a lot, uh, you know, but uh, so if you could get thirty thousand square feet, you could have a house. That might work. Uh, you know what I'm saying? Like, it depends on how, how this thing gets sort of worked out. I, I just can't see it working the way it is now. I think it'd be too complicated. I think it would make a lot of people not happy. You know, we had, uh, not too recently, we had complaints about uh trash and, and other things. Because, oh, they get to do this, I don't get to do that, this one here and so on and so forth, and we all know, we get these calls, right? Don't we? About how it's not fair, because I can't do it, but he can do it, you know, kinda thing. And this is gonna be a, really a big one of those. This is gonna be major. Um, and uh, certainly, I don't wanna see every house in town become a duplex, because they put an in-law apartment in their house.
Good, thank you. Uh, Jim?
Um, ju- just quick, maybe, maybe um, our town attorney could take a look at the, the language associated with the. Bylaw to make sure it's technically correct and um, and let us know. Um, if, if people like one part and not another, you might be able to divide the question for town meeting floor and take it into two parts. There are rules and regulations which um regulate the size of what accessory apartment can be on a um. Or an in-law apartment can be on a home. It can't be large, then it's gonna be a percentage of it. Uh, we already have small lot exemptions for lots that were. Um, zoned previous to, I forget the date. Um, a few weeks ago, I saw someone who took a lot. And I, I, I do sometimes, you know, I'll look at some of the. And I, I do sometimes, you know, I'll look at some of the, do a little title searching stuff on it. And so, you know, it's, on the title search and whatnot, it mentions the size of the lot, and this is over an onset. And, um, they subdivided into two, 5,000 plus square foot lots, and because it was an old beat-up shed in the front corner of it, um, they got, um, approval to have two buildable lots, approval not required, so.
Yeah, they have sewer over there.
Well, yeah, and does Rose Point have sewer now?
Uh, I think it does, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Rose Point got sewer in 2004.
Yeah, and so, it, it could have some applicability, I, I would ask, um, town council to look at it and weigh in and, 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 um, and if you don't like one part, but the other is okay, then, you know, maybe we can divide the question and do one part, uh, for further study.
That's up to Madam Moderator.
Well, if someone can ask to divide the question.
Yeah.
Right, but it's.
Make the decision.
Yeah, it's up to her.
Thank you.
Okay, well, i-in that instance, and I think that's actually wise, uh, do we wanna hold off on a, on a vote on this for now? And, uh, ask Attorney Bowen to take a quick look, see, and just, he can explain to us the impacts as well. Uh, not just whether it's legal or not, but, uh, we can get further into the impacts, because, you know, he's used to poring through the zoning.
Bring it back next week.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, the task being given to me is too broad. I, I can't speculatively address impacts on a hypothetical division of the question. Yeah, I could probably opine as to whether, in my opinion, it would be within the scope of the article as to whether the question could be divided. And I believe, um, that the answer to that is yes, uh, subject, of course, to Madam Moderator's approval. Ultimately, it's her call. Um, beyond that, I, I'm not quite sure what I could opine as to.
The other thing I'd really like to wait for would be the, um, Board of Health's recommendation or consideration or whatever, because they're the ones who would have to be licensing hookups or nitrification systems.
Or not.
What?
Or not.
Right, or not, but.
Denying them, so. I follow them.
And then they have to inspect the rentals too.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, in, in a way, the board is getting ahead of itself. If the bylaw were to pass, then it would be up to anyone who wished to take advantage of the relief afforded by the bylaw to make its, its pitch, throwing application of the Board of Health. And then the Board of Health, uh, would hold a hearing and make a decision on the facts presented as to whether, uh, somebody would be entitled to have a system or not, or a connection or not. Uh, there's no way, even if the Board of Health is sitting down now to look at it, there's no way for the Board of Health to say much more than, yeah, some of these people are gonna have to come into us, and some of them are gonna get approved, and maybe some of them are. I really don't see what the Board of Health can say beyond that, because the Board of Health won't have any particular application in front of it, nor would it be proper for the Board of Health to prejudge any application that is not yet before. I think it's just a situation where, uh, you have a citizen petition, it goes on the warrant. If somebody wants to ma-make a motion to divide the question, uh, in my opinion, that would be proper, but that's up to the Madam Moderator to, uh, approve and decide. And then, if the town approves the bylaw proposal whole or in part, let the chips fall where they may as to whether anyone will be able to get a connection in front of the Board of Health.
Okay. Well. I don't see anybody in a rush to make a motion to recommend on this at the moment, so I guess it's gonna take a little more discussion. Uh, moving on to the, uh, we don't have anything else, do we?
No, we've done everything else.
Okay. Any other, uh, town business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting, Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Jim?
Um, no, um, did, did we already? Did we do the, um, special town meeting warrant, the solar bylaw, did we vote on that?
No, we did not.
Oh. Are we gonna wait on that, or, or, um, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I know, we, I didn't think we had, I'm just asking.
Oh, you're, you're correct, number 17, item 17 on the special has not, we have not yet voted on it.
Yeah, the, uh, the Finance Committee report has already gone to print, so there's, there's no particular urgency to do it, you know, now as opposed to another week or two, if the members wanna hold off, but if somebody wants to make a motion, then we can do that too.
I'll make a motion to support.
Here we have it. We have a motion to support from Jim, second from Alan, uh, discussion? Anyone?
Chairman, I know they came, um, Nancy and Richard came before the Finance Committee and talked about, I think one of the things that the, uh, the differences for understanding, this is, I guess they're really trying to use this as a moratorium until they can get a new solar, new solar bylaws ready. Um, in hindsight, probably would've been easier just doing a moratorium with a, with a sunset, but, uh, looks like this is what they're trying to do. Um, I don't know, I think, uh, I think there's some need for change, so I, I would think from our end, maybe, uh, from Board of Selectmen's might be worth, uh, backing it up and see what we get in the, in the fall town meeting. I know Richard and Nancy have, have promised to get it going, and Nancy's reached out to me about some meetings, so they're being, uh, very, very genuine about it.
Okay, thank, thank you for providing the board with that information. Uh, well, I'll, I'll go around the horn, Alan?
You want questions or you want to vote?
Uh, I, I'm still on discussion, I assume members might wanna say some things, so.
I have no, nothing for me.
Okay, Patrick?
So, so, if I remember right, this is the solar bylaw we're talking about, right, the one that they're?
Yeah, yeah, the 10 acre, five-year previously.
Yeah, 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 well, i-if I remember right, I was listening to, uh, town council, uh, talk about this, and, um, um, he was saying, well, you know, this is difficult, because it's very specific, and there's a lot of regulation that doesn't like, doesn't like, by state and so on, that doesn't allow you to get in the way of solar energy, solar fields, and, you know, you're gonna have to be very specific, very whatever. So I went and looked it up, and it does seem like they have an open-ended thing that's, you know, it's hard to get in the way. Um, it does seem that way, um, from, from what I read, and so I'm not so sure. I mean, I'm okay to support it, you know, and see if we can put it off until we can get something going and get a new bylaw, but I don't think it's gonna pass muster. Uh, I think, I think council was sort of alluding to that when he made it, when he talked about it last time.
Okay, uh, Jim?
I'm good.
Judy?
I'm good.
Yeah, uh, I'll probably end up voting for this, I think. Uh, you know, I, I, I do, once again, uh, have concerns about slowing down the development of solar. And what's interesting is, uh, earlier today, uh, I saw an announcement that the federal government had approved the, uh, wind project out in, uh, Nantucket Sound, uh, which, that was, that was at least a 10-year battle. I mean, I mean, maybe a 15-year battle, because I remember Ted Kennedy was alive and.
Yeah, he was still alive.
He wasn't, he liked wind power, but he didn't wanna wreck in his sunsets, uh, so, you know, uh, I'll support it for now, I, I, I think that, you know, people need to be realistic, though, about what is going to solve, uh, climate change, what is gonna solve, uh, global warming, the use of fossil fuels and everything else. And, you know, we're at the bottom of the regulatory totem pole. More importantly, we're at the bottom of the fin, the financing totem pole for these things. When the federal government decides to issue tax credits for super-large solar arrays and big windmill farms, uh, yes, they are doing corporate bidding to some extent, uh, remember who contributes to their campaigns. Uh, the flip side to that is, big projects require big, uh, firms to, to get big results uh, in, in record time. So I'm betwixt and between on whether it's a great idea long-term for the planet to do something like this, but, uh, I'm willing to, to set, sort of set it aside if we can for a few months while we try to figure it out. Patrick?
Okay, so, um, you know, I, I kind of wanna piggyback on that a little bit. Um, there is, uh, a problematic in that they have put us on the fast track suddenly to getting, uh, you know, new carbon neutral by, what, 2035 or something like that, which is, uh, you know, people don't understand. That is fast-tracked, I mean, that is amazingly fast-tracked. I don't even see this, first off, there's no technology that'll even get us there yet, right now, that's in place, okay? But in order to even get close to it, we're going to need to, um, you know, really accelerate solar and wind energy. I mean, we're gonna have to be, you know, uh, it's gonna be a tough thing to do. I mean, it is, you know, if you wanna fast-track it like that, and by the way, the way they're treating fuel, fuel right now, uh, basically as, uh, as a poison pill, um, you know, they start shutting down all this fuel and everything else. We're gonna have to get there quick, we're all gonna be in a lot of trouble. I'm gonna, we're gonna be out there on our bicycles riding, you know, uh, if we don't, uh, you know, get, get going.
Well, we'd all be a lot healthier, so there's that.
Yeah, yeah, we will be, that's one good thing. My father was in the bicycle business, so I guess that's a good thing.
There you go. Okey-dokey, Judy?
No.
No, nothing? Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah, sure.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Uh, myself, yes, 500, uh, and, you know, thank you to, uh, Derek and Nancy and Richard Swenson, uh, for, you know, getting involved and talking about this issue, I appreciate that. Okay, now, we got any other town business, Alan?
No way.
Okay, Patrick?
No.
Jim?
No.
Judy?
No.
Uh, myself, nothing, town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I'm sad to announce, we, we're gonna have to look for a new library director. George Ripley has let us know that, uh, he's entering his resignation, he'll be taking over in Westport.
Oh, that's sad.
That is sad.
George has been a great asset for the last two years, and, uh, I know everybody's really enjoyed him, so, yeah. Best of luck and, uh, you know, see what, see what we have to get together, obviously, with, uh, the different groups and start the, uh, process, so.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, that was the, uh, that was the main stuff.
Okay, well, thank you, and, uh, good luck to, to George. Uh, liaison and issue reports, Alan?
Uh, the only thing that really came up in the last week was the planning board last night. Uh, there's several different things came up, uh, which required unfortunately some legal advice. My issue really is when the board has a couple weeks between, uh, meetings, and they know they have an issue, they need to reach out and get some information ahead of time. Last night's meeting was kind of, I would say, embarrassing, because of how things went through. Not gonna get into any details, but they gotta, when they know they have an issue coming up, they've gotta do some advanced work ahead of time. You can't wait till the actual meeting and all of a sudden have an issue when you have, when you actually discussed it two weeks before and still don't know what's going on, that's it.
Okay, then, uh, Patrick?
Yeah, no, um, uh, my, some of my stuff is on hold right now, because, uh, we're waiting for RFPs and, you know, various other things, so we'll, uh, we'll just move on.
Okay, thank you, uh, Jim?
Um, yeah, we're looking for board members still for the Kibwe Wareham Regional Refuge District, and also, um, and that's it for right now, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Judy?
No.
I don't have anything either, uh, we have minutes.
So the, um, approval of the minutes of April 27th, 2021, everyone was present.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Uh, one second, Jim?
There was, I believe, multiple errors in what was sent to me, because there was multiple, multiple duplications.
It was fixed. Do you wanna hold off on it until you see?
Yeah, until they're sent out, I mean, it was just, I don't know, it, it just, there was multiple duplications from paragraph to paragraph, so if you'd rather just see it cleaned up?
Okay, well, just, I, I'll retract my motion and we'll just make sure that it's cleaned up.
All right.
We'll put it on next week, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, reorganization of the board, we do this every year. Uh, before we do it, thank you, uh, before we do anything here, uh, I'd like to thank the board, uh, for how they've worked with me, uh, and assisted me in, in trying to perform the role of, of managing the meetings and getting things discussed, decisions made, and so on and so forth. Uh, you know, we had a rocky start last year, but we got over it. Uh, I think we've done a pretty good job of, of sticking to business, uh, trying to get the, the business of the town done. Uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, the employees of the town, uh, the town administrator, uh, our staff in the selectman's office, all of the departments, all the department heads. Uh, I'd like to thank our public safety personnel as well, uh, you know, they made it a lot easier to sit in this position, uh, when we were dealing with things like trash, uh, COVID, uh, all, all of the things that have happened in the, in the past, uh, what, 10 and a half months, something like that. Uh, so, you know, I, I was touched by the support that, that I and the board receive as we tried to do things uh, for the people who weren't necessarily happy with our decisions, uh, just know that we do try to make the best decisions. We may not always agree with, with each other, uh, you may not always agree with us, but that's government. And, uh, so with that, uh, we're down to reorganization of the board. I sort of challenged the four members, uh, to, to come together and try to discuss this and try to, try to come up with a consensus, uh, so I'll go to Patrick, he had his hand raised.
Okay, uh, first off, Peter, I wanna thank you and Judy for the work you put in this week, this, uh, year. Um, I know it wasn't a, wasn't the best year with all the stuff going on, it's difficult, it's a difficult task, and I'm sure you're gonna love to have time off coming from here on out. Uh, I know that when you get done with your time as chair and clerk, it's nice to get out from underneath it, for sure. And with that, I will move that we make Judith Whiteside the chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the upcoming year.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alan, uh.
For this, for discussion?
Yes, go ahead, Alan.
As everybody knows, last year, a year ago, when we did this, I was not very happy how the process went. I made my feelings pretty well-known at that time. Uh, I feel as though we're back to where we were from a year ago today, and, uh, you know, I haven't had any real discussions on this, but normally, this would have been Mrs. Whiteside's turn a year ago. And, uh, obviously, at this point here, I'd also add to Patrick's motion, uh, for Jim Minister to be clerk.
Yeah, it was gonna be that. Actually, uh, we, we can't hear that motion yet until we, until we, 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 well, I don't know, that's a question for town council. I mean, if everybody wants to vote, make one vote for two positions.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Why not?
I'll ask council if we can do it that way.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Then I second the motion.
Then I will add to my motion that Jim become clerk.
And I'll second.
Okay, well, first, maybe we wanna ask these people if they actually wanna do these things. Uh, I can tell you that my answer today, uh, might be the same as it was a year ago, but after having done it for a year, it, it might not too. Um, Judy, is this something you're willing to take on?
Yes.
Jim, is this something you're willing to take on?
I'm gonna respectfully decline. Thank you, though.
Okay, that's certainly within your rights to do so.
Yes.
Uh, I appreciate it, uh, the, the clerk frankly is a, is a tough job and a thankless one, uh.
I just feel I can do, do more without being tied down to that, and, um.
It's okay, Jim, it's up to you, you don't have to explain, you can do whatever you want, it's your thing.
Yep, well, that's, that's.
Thank you, but, no, thank you.
We're totally on your side, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, so you're gonna have to go back to your original motion, which is, uh.
Judy Whiteside.
And we have the second by Alan, uh. Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Present.
Judy?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 401, uh, Jim being present. Now, uh, we need a clerk.
Patrick? Jim, I would really like to have you step up.
Well, again, thank you, but I'm going to respectfully decline and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
If Ms. Whiteside can put up with me, I'll do it for her.
You could do it around, okay, so.
I've got too much on my plate.
Yeah, he's he's.
Yeah, I know you do.
Foreign minister, yeah.
The foreign minister.
Well, that's really what he is.
Yeah, he is.
Like our Secretary of State, Foreign Minister. Okay, we have a motion by
Judy.
Yeah.
Motion is by Judy.
Chairman now, so Judy's got to call for the motion.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Anymore.
Oh, yeah, may I have a motion to make a recommendation for the clerk?
So so may with Patrick.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second out. I'll second.
Okay.
I can do that now.
You can second now, Peter.
Roll call. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Present.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes, four zero one.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. Judy?
Yep, and I guess that I'm waiting for the motion that always comes from Mr. Slaven.
Motion to adjourn people.
Is there a second? Oh, may I have a roll call, please? Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Good night.
Good night. Way ham. Thank you.